Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask for is agenda changes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we are still waiting for a resolution from our municipal accounting software, so we will take the financial report off again this evening and hopefully have that for next meeting. But that is the only change that staff has.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public forum. Is there anybody here wishing to address the council this evening that's not on the agenda? You're not here to address the council, right? Okay. Seeing no movement from the gallery, we'll close the public forum and I'm gonna go on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further discussion with regards to the consent agenda, I'd make a motion to approve that agenda for July twenty-second, twenty twen- twen- July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. And the consent agenda passes. We're gonna move on to unfinished business. And the first item under unfinished business is a public hearing on a distressed property at three twenty-two Harvey. I'm gonna open that public hearing now. Ethan, you wanna make an introduction?
Sure. Um, as noted, uh, Mr. Conley came in and addressed the council last time, discussed his plans and hadn't completely narrowed in. Uh, since that time, the structure, the primary structure has been demolished and removed. Mr. Conley here is tonight to, uh, I believe, update on where his plans are at. And we will look at our recommendation to council following Mr. Conley's comments.
Good evening, Ken. Uh, step up to the podium, introduce yourself to the rest of the city and...
Yes, I'm Ken Conley, owner of three two two, three twenty-two Harvey.
So Ken, I've been by there. Uh, the primary structure is down, the lot's looking good. I see you've been working on that garage. I'm gonna save you some time and ask the council if they have any questions for you at this time.
No, I don't.
I've been by and looked at it and seen it all, so it's looking much better.
I think the property looks a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam?
Well, I tell you what, I would direct city attorney to prepare a resolution, establish time lot not more than two years for the property of three twenty-two Harvey to come into compliance with city zoning regulations or ordering removal of the accessory structure. And also, I would make a motion to continue the public hearing for the distressed property at three twenty-two Harvey until August ninth, twenty twenty-one at seven P. M.
Second.
Easy enough.
That's great. We have a motion and a second for that ordinance. Basically, Ken, that's gonna give you, we're gonna put that ordinance together. It'll give you two years to build that primary structure in front of that garage, right, Ethan?
Yeah, uh, there's several options. We've discussed, uh, with Mr. Conley of, he could do in addition to the accessory structure and bring, um, what would be required for it to meet primary, which is essentially bathroom, living facilities, a kitchen, could build a new primary structure, or choose to get rid of the accessory structure and any of those options would be available, um, to your timeline. The resolution will make sure that it's not gonna be a continuing non-conforming use, and that's really why we're asking for the continuance to give Brad time to prepare that resolution from you all, and then we'll just attach that to our record for the property, so.
So we've...
City of Halsted wants to thank you for cleaning up that property.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Absolutely.
I think I'm happy too.
So as far as this ordinance or this resolution, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Thanks for being here tonight, Ken.
Okay, thank you very much for your patience. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number thirteen twelve. This is a noise ordinance. We'll let Ethan bring us up to date on that.
Thank you. Um, the proposed ordinance thirteen twelve, that was included with your packet, drafted by the city attorney based on comments provided last meeting. Uh, this is the more, um, subjective ordinance, doesn't, doesn't get into decibel, um, more, more subjective in nature in terms of that. Also allows a little more flexibility when it comes to law enforcement and enforcing, uh, that by the means of doing an abatement order, um, as opposed to doing a full-on summons to court. I believe both, uh, Police Chief Orm and Attorney Jantsch have some comments on that, so we'll gladly turn it over to them to kind of...
It looks like Josh is gonna go first, so he'll come up to the podium.
Uh, I don't know how many, how much comment I have on it, just wanted to give you a quick rundown. Like Ethan already told you, we've all three kinda sat down, talked about it, looked at the ordinance. The one big thing we kept hearing that the complaint of the loud mufflers. Ordinance, uh, section number three, kind of a catch-all for noise, will cover loud mufflers with a vehicle. With that said, I'm, no ordinance or laws ever perfect. There will be some challenges, but this is a good starting point for us, I think. This, like any other violation, the officer will have to see, like for instance, stop sign. They see someone run a stop sign, that violation, they stop the person, they issue citation. Same thing with a muffler. They see the car rev their engine, take off excessively, creating noise, same thing. Stop the vehicle and, uh, go through the process. Uh, other than that, like I said, I think it's a good starting point. I'm, uh, like I said, Attorney Jantsch and I talked, I think there may be some changes we may have to look at later, but for now, I think this is our best option to see how it works.
Changes such as?
Um, you know...
What better time to change them than now?
Well, 'cause right now, we really don't know. It's kind of a trial and error, to be honest.
General statement.
What's that?
What you said.
On...
Just a general statement.
Yes. I mean, nothing's perfect, but I think this is a good start to see what problems we may or may not come up with. I'm not specifically pointing out anything good or bad in it that I think needs to go one way or the other. Just sometimes you don't know till you try it and figure out what works or doesn't work, so.
Well, I hope we don't have any challenges, which means you don't have to stop anybody, but the likelihood of that is probably impossible.
Right.
You had some comments regarding this, Brad?
Just to echo what the chief has said, it, I've done a number of these in different settings, and it's somewhat of a, uh, trial and error to a degree, and that's even a misnomer in and of itself. But we've done the definitional elements of this that generally cover what we need to, uh, and the various specific prohibitions in section four. The generic in section three is the one that tends to be, as, uh, uh, Councilmember Campbell had mentioned last time, is what, what do we do to make this, um, objective? I mean, how do you go ahead and quantify? Well, that's difficult to do. I went ahead and placed it because it's easier to do, um, with noise emitting devices such as stereos and that kind of thing. We set a standard fifty feet at fifteen point two-five decibels. That is kind of the standard that's utilized in a lot of those kinds of instances. And so that's in place, but the difficulty with that, if we start going with that, that starts to shift into that much more specific, uh, type of enforcement tool that I gave you as an alternative to this. And then we're gonna be getting into certified meters. We're gonna be getting into situations where those officers are gonna have to search out the complaint even more specifically and, uh, be able to take a reading and those kinds of things. So this one works in a lot of different settings. It's being used very similarly in a number of cities, some similar to our size. And so I think it's a good place to begin and gives us at least the ability for warning and, and some ability to control, what we have not thus far had anything in place to control. Let's see it from there and see what we can do.
Well, unless there's any more questions or discussion, I would make a motion to approve ordinance number thirteen twelve, an ordinance, uh, providing for the regulation of various noise and general disturbance activities within the city of Halsted.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve ordinance number thirteen twelve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That ordinance carries. Next on the agenda is consideration of ordinance, uh, thirteen thirteen, and I'm gonna go back to Ethan for that.
Thank you. Uh, this is, uh, again, based off of discussion, uh, various aspects. Just essentially looking for, um, the financial health and security of our, uh, city-owned utilities, that prohibits private provision of Sted services unless, uh, that private provision is done through an accepted franchise. Also covers some of the existing, um, exceptions we do have, like allowing for, um, private sewer systems in those instances where connection to the city sewer is not, uh, feasible either by engineering or, or costs. So again, we'll turn it over for Brad for the, his take or what exactly this is covering. But basically, this would cover any city-owned utility or utilities that are not currently franchised.
Again, um, in this particular instance, our general task in terms of municipalities is health, public health, safety and welfare. In order to, uh, ensure safe transmission and distribution and delivery of various types of commodity utility services within the city, um, we utilize franchises so that, uh, that you can determine if someone is qualified to make that kind of a delivery. What we did was place this, so I didn't have to do it in each and every one of the various, uh, commodity services or utilities that we deliver in that, in chapter fifteen, just placed it in article one, um, so that it would cover anything and everything with the exception of, uh, section four, which are sewer systems, because we do allow laterals in certain private property, um, usage in those particular cases. In every other instance, uh, service will be provided by an approved franchise holder. And in so doing, we grant them the right to use our delivery system, and I noted that in section three, and granted that franchise there. We really had not done that anywhere else in our code, which was interesting. So I placed it here. So, and I also took out of, uh, this process, didn't wanna get into situations if you start talking about utility, someone arguing about the, you know, thirty-two, thirty-four pound, whatever they are, um, bottles for propane that we use with barbecue grills and that kind of thing. Thus, in section two, those portable services are noted, and I suppose that can create a loophole and a problem. But given that they're to be, um, fully portable, home-use and self-contained, it'd be kinda tough for someone in a commercial setting to be able to argue that that would apply to them. So tried to close that as much as I possibly could, um, and put it into a format that, uh, allows us to grant franchises. We are not in any way, shape or form being, um, uh, impermissible in terms of commerce in doing this. I've checked and rechecked that with several different sources at state level. So I think this is as close as we can come to having a regulatory environment in place to ensure that health, safety, welfare purpose that we achieve or try to achieve.
Okay. I would make a motion to approve ordinance thirteen thirteen, ordinance providing to granting franchises for utility distribution and restriction of utility services to patrons within the jurisdictional limits of the city of Halsted.
Second.
Have the motion in a second to approve, uh, ordinance number thirteen thirteen. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, and that ordinance will carry as well. That, uh, finishes up our unfinished business, and we'll be moving on to new business now. And the first item on the agenda for new business is discussion on changes to scope of work for two oh four Main. Uh, we have Mr. Tim Sutherland here tonight, but I'll let Ethan give us pretense and make that introduction.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So Tim had reached out as they had started and kind of first got in of, of the possibility of maybe changing the scope of work, um, based on the conditions that were being observed as they were demoing. You have the letter in the packet there that he wrote, kind of outlining his proposal, and I asked him to come here this evening. And I know some of you were able to visit the site and talk to Mr. Sutherland as well, uh, to put your eyes on it. But for those that couldn't make it, I figured this was the best opportunity for him to kind of bring you guys up to speed on what he's thinking about the potential of actually keeping some sort of structure at two oh four.
Welcome, Tim.
Thank you. My name is Tim Sutherland. I'm, uh, with Sutherland Builders at Wichita, and we're doing the work at two oh four Main. One of the things that I'd like to talk about is saving the first floor of the original building. And going through, um, taking off the upper levels, we were able to determine that the floor joists on the second floor floor, same as the ceiling for the first floor, were pretty stable. Everything's pretty solid. They're in good shape. The decking needs to be replaced because it was replaced at some point in time with OSB wood, and through the last several years, it's gotten wet, and it's, it's deteriorating to the point it needs to have new decking put on it. But I think that by saving the original building, we can take some cost that we were gonna be using for the demolition, for the new block wall on the front, for the new ramp, and for the, uh, metalwork in there. We can take that money and refocus it back to putting a roof on the building and saving the building. The back half of the building is still pretty deteriorated. It's pretty soft, and we're gonna have to take it off. It's, it's only a single-story structure, but it's been added on over the last several year, well, over a period of a couple times of additions. So I don't know when it was put on exactly, but it's probably anywhere from fifty to sixty years old. And the roof on it's pretty poor, so it's gonna basically have to come on down. What's gonna be left is an area of concrete that's approximately forty feet long and twenty feet wide at the back. It's gonna be flat cement, so we'll have to do some saw cutting, put some drain troughs to get water carried away from that area. So that's gonna be changing the scope of, instead of having the whole thing as an open area, we, we're gonna basically have just the back half open. And then we'll be placing a new roof on. The, um, front parapet wall will be about a foot and a half above where the window seals are right now. We stopped there because I wanna take the window seals out, put stone back in it, and I wanna take it back up about another foot and a half or so to make a lineup with the wall to the north, to the chiropractor. And then we'll put a concrete cap on top of all of it, and then we'll also do some flashing. And I visited with Ray Roofing, uh, about a month ago, got a quote on it. We're gonna be doing a tapered insulation roof so we can get our slope, and we'll slope everything back to the back. And that way, we'll have good flow of water. We won't have any pounding or anything up there. I talked to him today, just to reach out and see what their timeline was, and they told me they thought they could probably do it in approximately three weeks, which is gonna be about where I'm at, uh, as far as for me to redeck it and get the walls built up above. It's gonna take me about that long to do that, so it's gonna timeout about right if you guys approve it. So that's kind of where I'm at right now. But the main focus I wanted to do is I'm basically trying to keep everything in the original budget. I don't wanna spend any more money. I don't wanna ask for any more money. I wanna make it work to where we have a functional building when it's all said and done. We still have a little bit of money to play with for the back door, 'cause there's an archway back in the back of the original building. I wanna save that archway. Uh, it's a pretty unique character of the, uh, building. But we'll have to determine what type of doors to put in there. If one puts storefronts or wood doors or whatever. And then also on the front of the building, the original scope was to tear out the entrance and have two block walls. We're gonna be leaving the entrance there now, so what we'll probably be having to do is come out on the sidewalk, about four feet in front of it, maybe five, and have it towards slopes back to the north and the south, and have a handrail on there. So it's gonna protrude out from the building, but at least we'll have our ADA entrance into the building. And that's what we're, that's what we're proposing to do at this time. But I just wanted to throw it out there and visit with you guys, see if you have any idea of any, uh, any indication of entertaining saving the building or not. That's kind of where I'm at.
And Tim, monetarily, what you're proposing is within the scope of the monies that we have spent with you to do the rework.
Correct.
I know when you first brought this up and it made it to the paper, I'm thinking, man, I wish this guy shut up and leave this thing alone. We'd get it torn down, be done with it. But after visiting with you today onsite, and I think I can say this on behalf of the other two people that were with us, you're very professional.
Thank you.
You're forward-looking, and we really appreciate how you've looked at this, and I think your recommendation is a definite benefit to saving a building on Main Street, and I thank you.
George, you in there?
Well, again, you've got all these years of experience and, you know, kind of in the same field as you. Just everything you said was solid, and I was right there with you, so I appreciate where you're coming from.
So the interior of that first floor, I hadn't, didn't get an opportunity to go out there.
It's gonna be a shell. When we get done, it'll be basically a shell.
Okay.
There won't be any utilities, uh, no gas lines, no water lines, no electric, uh, no heat and air system. It will have to be brought back in after we do the work in there.
Yeah.
But it's cleaned out. Um, we've been able to get pretty much most of the mold, uh, issues and stuff. A lot of that was the stuff that was left in the building, and we got it all out, and it's really getting much drier in there now. Of course, tonight it's wet, but can't help that. But, uh, the building itself is really, as far as the original building, I keep saying the building, the original building, front half, that's the original structure, and that's what we're focusing on, trying to save. The back half, we won't be able to, but the front half, we want to.
I think that building has two by twelve, full dimension, floor trusses in that building on twelve-inch centers with column supports, probably every fifteen feet or ten feet.
They're actually about eight feet.
Eight feet?
Yeah. It's only twenty-foot wide structure, and you have two of them.
I don't wanna be around something hits that or...
Pretty sure you could park a Mack truck on that second floor over there.
Well, if I had the new plywood on it, maybe, but...
Keep the wheels over the joists.
Yep.
Tim, I got a chance to walk through that building with you, and, uh, what I can say is you took what we thought was a, a hopeless project, uh, that was not a very popular project to begin with, and I, I think you're gonna help us turn it into win-win for this community, and for that, I can't thank you enough.
So what is, so the south wall where Tessa's building is at?
Both walls, the south and the north wall to the chiropractor, they're both common walls.
Yeah.
That structure was built in three units when it was originally built. So those walls are like eighteen inches thick between each side. So that on Tessa's side and also on the chiropractor's side, it's that thick. So it's a solid wall. We, you know, you, I don't know if you watched us chipping it down. We've had to chip it down the last several weeks, but it's a pretty solid wall.
And the aesthetics of, of that wall, once we take it down to the single story, what are we gonna do there?
As far as the tops of it or...
Yeah, so I haven't seen, I haven't been up there to, to kind of look at it. So the last I'd looked, you still had some chipping away, I guess you could say.
Right. We're gonna put a concrete cap, actually on the north side and on the west side. And that way, we'll do a basically a concrete cap, just like what's on the other buildings downtown and downtown. We're trying to simulate what the, the architecture is.
Yeah.
And by doing that, we'll be able to seal it off. But, uh, some of the areas on the south side and Tessa's side, where the wall is taller, we're gonna put metal panels there like we originally had planned on.
Okay.
And then we'll be flashing that on the roof.
Okay.
Ethan, do we need a motion on this or just a recommendation to change the direction of, from demolition to reconstruction?
I would probably say a motion is most appropriate, 'cause you're changing the scope.
We want a motion to redirect from demolition to reconstruction to a single-story, approximately twenty-foot by forty-foot building?
Sixty-foot deep. It's twenty by sixty is what we'll be saving.
Twenty by sixty?
Yes.
Okay, twenty by sixty building? Yeah, take that back to a shell that can be remodeled and safe for a business from a future tenant at the same pricing as where we were at for total demolition?
Yeah.
Did that cover it?
Sounds like a motion. And you got your second, so there you go.
Good enough, Brad? Have the motion in a second to, uh, to change the scope on this project. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion carries, uh. There you go, Tim. You got your permission to, uh, continue on.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Tim, thank you very much.
Next item is discussion of planning commission action on preliminary powers first plat. Uh, this is, um, associated with the property to, uh, potentially extend Main Street. That's all I'll say. I'll, I'll, I'll give it to Ethan for the rest of it.
Thanks. Um, so this is very unique because generally when plating is being considered, it's the only time the city council would really be involved is, is kind of towards the end of that, when road dedications or public rights of way come before you all to accept or not accept. Uh, in this case, though, because we acquired the Powers property and it's city-owned, uh, we're basically serving in the development chair, and you all as the governing body are, uh, leading that process, so, um...
So in other words, we gave you more work when we did this? Oh, okay.
Little bit, little bit, but I get to throw it back in your court here. And so the planning commission, um, reviewed the preliminary plat, um, and had some suggested changes. They did approval basically based on conditions. Um, I'll start out and say this is still in the preliminary phase, so the final plat is really what's gonna be, what, you know, has the guidelines, what it will look like going forward. So there's still room for, for things to change. I will note, the preliminary plat, um, still showed undersized on lots three and four. Um, but if you go to the final, that's why I included it, um, Harland did, uh, per the council request, the last time you guys reviewed that, put that at that minimum sixty-five frontage, which did extend Stutzman Circle. But if you refer back to the preliminary plat, because that's what actually shows your floodplain, you'll notice that, um, you know, let's say a third of Stutzman Circle and then, um, a little bit of lot one and more of lot four are technically within the floodplain fringe. And so the planning commission, one of their conditions was that no residential lot, um, be within the established floodplain. And then, let me find the other here. And then moving Stutzman Circle, uh, further to the south, uh, to also limit encroachment on the floodplain, which, as I also serve as the city floodplain administrator, I don't have any issue with that because it creates less work for me and another hat I get to wear. That being said, obviously, um, you know, something that was communicated to, to the planning commission was, you know, the city had designed this with the four lots, um, in an attempt to hopefully see, uh, return on investment as we had to purchase that entire eight-point-three acre parcel. Um, so we were really interested in trying to get as many functional residential lots, um, and those lots basically lined up with the residential lots to the south, um, for Main Street and Stutzman, um, that are in the Cedar Meadow second plat, um, that's been approved. Uh, so you have those two conditions basically, and then, uh, the planning commission also had a, um, recommendation to, they would like to see the city actually run sidewalk on both sides of Main Street, um, and push for that, that, um... You can see on the preliminary plat, kind of Harland called for it, just there on the west side of Main Street. And then there was a easement along that north boundary of lot one and lot four for another sidewalk, um, potentially. But the planning commission just felt that, based on the strategic plan and, you know, providing walkability, one of their checkpoints, uh, as they review plats, um, would just strongly encourage that, um, as part of the council as we work further on, uh, on moving that forward.
So they're wanting us, sorry, so they're wanting us to put a sidewalk in going across the bridge or drainage there, right? Where the street's gonna go, so they want sidewalks on both sides of that?
Right, so the, the culvert Harland size to be essentially the width of the entire street easement, uh, that's a hundred-foot right-of-way. Normally, or the street itself will be forty-one feet of that, um, which allows plenty of room for sidewalks to be put in both sides. We had talked a little bit with the developers going to the south of Main Street and had talked about the west side, which is why the preliminary plat moved. The planning commission just felt that it would be best served to do both sides of Main Street. It's, it's Main Street. It adds walkability. People don't have to cross the street. And then, again, since it's all an easement, it's not necessarily, you know, no one can force the city into constructing it, but, um, it does fit in kind of with the stated goals of, of our strategic plan and, um, would be tying a sidewalk along the north, north edge of the residential lots there and maybe running that down to Stutzman Circle to provide access back to Main and, and kind of forward-thinking, connecting your web of sidewalk, you know, together in, in walkability. Tying in, obviously, like we're doing safe routes to schools, which as this isn't even developed, um, you know, the kind of initial scope of them runs, uh, along Chestnut and, and that area. So this hopefully would connect to any improvements that we pursued under the Safe Routes to School program. But the big changes, I guess, for you all to consider, if you're okay, or if you would like to instruct me to go back to the planning commission and really, um, fight, is essentially that would take us... um, fight is essentially that would take us from the four shown lots, if we were following part and parcel or did not ask for a, them to consider changing that before the final plat is adopted. Um, you would lose and only have three residential lots, two off of the east side of Main Street and then one on the west side of Stutzman. So.
We're seeing how those lots are owned by the city of Halsted. And we knew that they were going to be infringing on the floodplain. We've gotta get the plot plan in place to have the study done to see if we can put the fill in to utilize that one lot. That was part of the consideration of purchasing the powers property. And I feel pretty positive that with the fill, especially from the basements, the road and everything else, that that one lot can be extended and be a buildable lot. But we don't know if it can be done until we get the plot plan approved. Now, if it were a, this is gonna sound terrible, if it were a, a subdivision by someone else that we couldn't count on getting that done, I'd have qualms. But since it's, since it's city owned and city controlled, we have an incentive to get that taken care of and I'd like to, like to send that back to have that reviewed. Cause that's well within the scope, I believe, with any question that there is on the planning commission's checklist.
Well, and that would go for Stutzman Circle too, cause a big portion of it too is.
And if we move that street further to the south, what does that do to the lots at the other end?
Um, as long as we brought it, um, and basically gaining him across that twenty foot utility and drainage easement, um, I mean, I don't think moving the street further to the south should pose that much of an issue, um, to the lots there on the south.
It would shrink lots, would it not?
It would potentially, depending on how far we pulled it, um, that might also drive lot four into having a smaller frontage, which, I mean, there are exceptions for smaller frontages off of cul-de-sacs because of the way they're shaped. Um, but you'd be getting really narrow, um, a really narrow frontage that is gonna.
Might not be appealing to somebody.
Might cause a hardship for a builder to put a, a conventional.
If we leave it like it is, the worst case is if we don't get permitted, we lose the lot.
Yeah, I mean, speaking as, from a floodplain administrative, the amount that these encroach on, the buildable floodplain is not an insurmountable challenge. I mean, we've had, we have lots and, and residences that are even more covered by the floodplain than lot four is. But these were preliminary condition approvals off the prelim plat. Um, but there is still chance for dialogue between the developer, us and the planning commission before the final plat. So just wanted to know whether we want to push more stringently and say, we really do want four lots there, please, please, please reconsider. Or do you want me to say, okay, and we'll have Harland just design that with three lots? So.
Our initial plan was four lots and let's go for it.
Four lots?
And if we can't build on it, so be it. But let's get the plot plan done, get the, uh, flood survey taken care of, to see if we can get the permits to put the back fill in there to make it a good buildable lot.
And how about the two sidewalks across the slough? I think part of the strategic plan really.
What's that adding cost?
Depends on if we get it covered by SRS or not.
See, we don't know that until.
I'd say this.
I would make it part of the plan. That way we can put it on the master plan on the SRS grant.
Cause eventually this will come back, uh, you know, even if it's city ownership. When we do benefit districts, presumably for the extension of utilities and what, the city would obviously opt these lots into those benefit districts most likely. Um, and at that point, that's where, but I, I agree that basically the best we could do is say, Harland, when he gives those pre-engineering numbers, which kinda sets that, say, design it with, you know, sidewalks both sides. I do know the box culverts being designed that it could carry sidewalk on both sides.
If we can use a block, a box culvert.
Yeah, if we can use a box culvert. Again, everything changes if for some reason that, that flow would necessitate a, an actual bridge as opposed to a culvert, so. But it gives me something to take back to the planning commission or, or know what.
I think the planning and zoning commission has done an outstanding job and they've always done an outstanding job. This is one exception that my main, my main thing is, it's City of Halsted that owns the property. We're in control of that property, so we're not throwing anything out there we're gambling on.
So all you need is a consensus to move forward on that, correct, Ethan? Counsel, you're okay with what's been discussed through this evening? There's your consensus, Ethan.
Okay.
So we'll move on to the next item. It's, uh, discussion of old settler golf cart regulations. I would assume we're gonna rely on Chief Form for this.
I think.
You weren't ready for this? What, uh, can, can you come up here and let us know what was proposed for old settlers last year that didn't happen?
Uh, last year prior to the cancellation, the rules that we kinda had talked about that were gonna be set in place were golf carts were the only vehicles allowed. And the city's plan, or you as the council had elected to waive, uh, the registration and the insurance for the weekend, but all other rules were still set in place.
Was that a two or three day weekend?
Now that, I don't remember if that was, uh, starting on a Friday or a Thursday. I don't recall the date of start.
In golf carts only?
Golf carts only was the decision made.
In the, in, in the, um, just a thought, just literally a thought. In the, uh, effort to keep things safe, if someone wants to use a cart, they're going to know before old settlers that they're going to use a cart. This includes the old settler staff, anyone else that wants to bring one in. Would it be a reasonable, reasonable thing? I mean, we have, we have, I'm kinda bouncing around here a little bit. But we have permitted carts. Permitted carts have to have a slow-moving vehicle sign. They have to read the rules. They have to know where they can go, where they can't go. Why would we, I, I, I'm in favor of putting maybe a, a ten dollar weekend permit. But part of that permit is literally to get a safety sign, which are what, four or five dollars?
Yeah, they're not much.
And they could hang it on with a clip and they get a set of the rules to know what they can do, what they can't do, so we don't get four people on a two-person cart. It just, it just explains our position. I mean, that's a thought.
Generally, when we do the inspections, we, uh, take, we document the numbers, we, for the VIN numbers. Um, we check what kind of equipment they have, whether they have seat belts.
Have to do that on these.
Uh, I do know that, I don't know if insurance is a, what's your guys' thoughts around that? I do know the rental carts, they have insurance. The places that rent those have insurance for them. So that's in my mind, not an issue. Um, the only ones that wouldn't would be someone that maybe doesn't generally have it here that brings it in for the weekend. Um, so insurance part of that is not a concern. The only, uh, issue that I could see with the registration for the weekend would be, uh, those who maybe don't know that this has started yet, that we have these rules. Um, they bring it in and so they come in Saturday morning at nine o'clock. Who do we have come do those in the midst of everything else going on?
Did we have that many issues the last, the year before last when we first implemented this?
We haven't done it since this was implemented. This would be the first year.
The first year that we did.
Last year would have been the first year, yes.
Victim to COVID.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
This is first year post ordinance.
Right.
You have a, you have competing and we did write the ability to accept certain parts of the ordinance, um, per council discretion for finite timeline, but yeah, it, it gets into that technically. If you make no exception, then in theory, every cart has to have proof of insurance. Be registered with the city, otherwise it's unable to operate.
I think it'd just be a logistical, I mean, I like the idea, but I think it'd be a logistical nightmare. Like you had said, with them coming in on Saturdays, they're not gonna have, I mean, we can't have staff here take up the time to, to do it. Most people coming from out of town, bringing their stuff in town. I just, I don't know. I just don't think it'd be.
My other concern is, um, and, and again, it's not that temporary registrations a non-starter, but I know in the past when we tried to do like lights or something on the rented carts especially, it becomes problematic for anyone that doesn't actually own their cart to do any, any sort of modification or install that equipment. And that's, I mean, if they couldn't get clips or something, uh, you know, how are they gonna fix those slow-moving vehicle signs or, you know, I don't wanna cause an issue either where we're, like Josh said, somebody comes in at nine thirty on a Saturday.
I think last year we did a great job. We didn't have any issues.
I think at minimum, Josh mentioned getting a, a list of rules and not overloading the, at minimum, somehow we look at making those avail, those available to those who are going to rent carts or bring their own cart in.
And generally what we do with that is we post it on Facebook and then the paper, uh, usually prints something for us too. And those are the two.
Front page.
Yeah, that's the two avenues that are generally used, used to get what the rules may or may not be out, what's gonna be allowed, what's not gonna be allowed, so.
Yeah, because not every cart that comes into town is gonna be from a rental company and insured. Joe's gonna pull one out of the farm shed because it'll hold air in the tires. He's gonna bring it to town. But we're after safety. That's, that's my only concern is safety, that people know what they can and can't do, should or shouldn't do. And if we can publish that on Facebook and in the paper, so I don't, what else can we do?
What are your guys' thoughts? I guess I'll ask for sure on, do you want them to try and figure out a way to put that slow-moving vehicle sign on, whether that's a magnet or a clip of some sort?
I'd be more concerned if they're driving them after dark to have some kind of a light on it. A white on the front and a red on the back.
And what we've done in the past.
It's a flashlight.
Right, for what we've done in the past is we allowed them to be out after dark after the fireworks. And then, but any other time, if it's two in the morning, it's pitch blackout, you didn't have headlights, taillights, you weren't driving at night. And that wa, and that was in place a few years even before all of this and it worked pretty good, to be honest. I, I didn't, we didn't have any issues with that.
I think our biggest thing last year was really the, the dirt bikes and the UTVs.
Prior year.
And all that stuff, yeah.
That's what we got the most complaints on was
Yeah.
little kids on motor scooters and at sixteen years of age to drive a golf cart. I think at some point, we gotta rely on you guys to enforce it. Know what the rules are, trying to get the rules out to everybody, so.
Alaska, I guess that's another thing. If we're going strictly by the ordinance, the ordinance says eighteen, do you wanna lower it to sixteen? You wanna lower it to sixteen for the weekend?
License driver.
Well, yeah, we'll go sixteen, cause at fifteen, they're still under restricted and.
Yeah, and we're not requiring insurance or anything like that, so.
Okay.
I, I think a licensed driver would be okay.
The big part to get out to people to make sure they understand and feel free to make sure this hits the paper, um, is two people per row. If you have four little ones, you can't stack four of them on, on one row. No matter how big or small they are, two people per row.
And seat belts.
And seat, right.
To have more than two, it'll be seat belts.
Well, ma, it's based off of, uh, yeah, if they're required to be in a car seat, they must be in a car seat on the golf cart. So for instance, we had one complaint two, three years ago or so that, of a, probably a six-month-old baby being held on a lap as they're driving the golf cart.
Right.
Yeah, if it's gotta be in a car seat in a car, it's gotta be in a car seat on the golf cart.
The co-op will be working and trucks will be moving between co-op to co-op, so stay the heck off of First Street.
You're thinking something, Brad. That brain's turning and I'm hearing it over here.
I think he's still, um, overwhelmed processing elements of this based on what's just been said.
Easier to say no, wouldn't it?
Honestly, uh, no insurance on those, I mean.
Yeah, the, like I said, the, the people who are already registered and the people who rent them will have insurance. So those won't be the issues. The issues will be like normally.
The out-of-towners that bring their golf cart into town for the weekend festivities.
Right.
Besides stopping every one of them or waiting until they have a violation.
Yeah.
Well, hope is that they comply.
It's a can of worms, buddy.
Shut up, yeah.
But it's been going on for years. We're just doing a little bit more restriction. Well, we didn't require insurance and all for UTVs or mopeds or four-wheelers and all that stuff.
I guess if you guys don't mind, I, I know Alan's here. Do you have any input on dates? Cause.
The, uh, golf carts are gonna be, uh, delivered on Thursday evening, um, for the old seller staff. Um, we also have, this year we, uh, ran into a problem trying to find enough carts available for renting. Um, it's called a golf cart truck. So it'll have two seats and then a bed on the back. I'm just guessing it's gonna be fine. As far as the slow-moving vehicle signs and the, the headlights, uh, I guess we can look into doing something.
Can't hear you, Alan.
We can look into doing something, I guess, as far as.
The signs we're not gonna need. We're, they decided, no for the signs.
No for the signs, okay.
Is old, is old settlers going to rent carts?
Yes.
You, the committee, you're going to rent carts to be used, so yours will be insured.
Yes.
And you can implement the slow-moving signs and at the time you rent it, you can hand out the safeties or the regulation sheet from City of Halsted.
No, they're renting them for their staff.
Their staff, that's what I understood.
Not how I meant to say that.
We're renting them from a company.
Renting carts to the general public?
No, 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 sorry. Misunderstood you.
Okay.
No, we're just renting them for, for the staff members to, to use.
So we're gonna need Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Those four days, yes.
For staff.
So if we started at six PM Thursday and ran it to six PM Sunday?
That would cover all of the events through Sunday.
Last one's a rogue rally, right?
Yeah, I, I, I think. It may or may not be over with at six o'clock, but it'll be.
If it's a little.
That general area, yeah.
Are there going to be events Thursday?
Thursday, there are some events on Thursday, yes.
Let's keep it simple, but do what we can to keep it safe. What time do the events start on Thursday, Alan?
Well, I don't have that with me at the moment, but.
My recommendation from looking at that, in the years past, we've always started it at six PM. So we go, I would do six PM Thursday.
So my comment was a lucky guess.
Yeah, I mean, we've always done it at six, so.
Collusion.
I'd say essentially what, from the conversation that you guys have, I think landed on is any licensed driver, uh, doesn't have to have proof of insurance, doesn't have to have a City of Halsted specific registration and no slow-moving vehicle sign.
Fully licensed.
Fully licensed driver, sorry.
We wanna make this daylight own, hours only for unlit carts?
You wouldn't have to do anything, cause that's the way the ordinance.
With the exception during the fireworks.
On Saturday night.
Should, if they don't have lights, they shouldn't be on the street.
I, I agree with Sam a hundred percent on that. I think they, it very least should have fixed some type of flashlight if they're gonna drive it after dark.
Well, that's a can of worms.
But if they do show up.
In light or a flashlight?
I don't care if it's a light on your cell phone. It needs to be something, cause I've seen those carts running around when it gets dark and it can be hard to see.
What Alan might have been saying is usually the Saturday night exemption was because so you have a lot of people that would show up well before it got dark, stay for the fireworks. And so we always basically interpreted of as long as you're heading directly home after the fireworks, if you were unlit, as far as your car, it, it wouldn't be a concern for the police department. They would just make sure you were on the most direct route home and not joyriding.
We approve that one.
See where they live, that's about it.
Do the best you can.
Okay, yeah, we'll get, uh, something written up and sent to the paper and like I said, we'll post it on our websites.
You see it?
Send it?
Yes.
And that's all you need on that, right, Ethan?
Uh, probably, I think we could just maybe do a motion for exceptions to ordinance twelve ninety-eight per discussion and as, or subject to staff.
Just review.
Review.
Second.
We need a council member to make that motion.
That would be the norm.
I would make a motion for ordinance twelve ninety-eight as per the consensus items that were discussed this evening during the council meeting.
Subject to staff review.
Subject to staff review.
Staff review.
Yeah.
Second.
You have that convoluted. You have that convoluted motion and second for the, uh, golf carts during Old Settlers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. And we'll get that put together and get it published, uh, to our Facebooks and the paper as soon as possible. Okay. That takes care of our new business tonight. Uh, this evening we do have one executive session on the agenda and I would entertain the motion for that now.
I make a motion, or I move that the Holstead City Council recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss contract negotiations, consultation pursuant to consultation with attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, exception KSA seventy-five four three one nine B two. And ask that in addition to the governing body, the following persons join the governing body in executive session, city manager and city attorney. Open meeting and governing body to reconvene in the city council chamber at eight ten PM.
Second.
Have the motion in the second to enter into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That passes, we will be entering executive session. Okay, we are back from our executive session. Is there any action to be taken as a result, though? Seeing no movement from the council, we will move on to our next agenda item, and that's reports. We'll start with governing body this evening. Tonight, I'll start with you, George.
Well, this weekend, I was just putting around here and there, and I saw a lot of grass mowed and blown out into the street. I don't know. I took pictures of some of it. Maybe I should just get them to somebody, but yeah, citizens, you gotta keep, you can't be blowing that stuff out in the street. It wreaks havoc with our sewer system.
Michael?
I'm good.
Sam?
Nothing.
I don't have anything this evening either, so we'll move on to Ethan for our manager report.
Q. Just a few short notes. We're continues on reconciling the city's financial statements and finishing up the proposed 2022 budget. Staff are currently working on filing the city's continuing disclosure requirements for our bond payments and have submitted requested financial information to Standard and Poor's for our rating agreement with them. I worked with Chair Cronister and Director Davidson with the Halsted Housing Authority on submission of their grant application to USDA Rural Development. Departments are currently engaged in preparation work for Old Settlers support, and some departments will be participating in the NUSD 440's Back to School Blast event. The city is currently working on finalizing information and our interface with the countywide mass notification system, and we hope to roll that out to residents, starting with that Back to School Blast. And we'll do some more work as for our social media on getting that pushed out, so we're excited about that coming. I am participating in a task force with KMIT that's looking at options for a potential new solution for employee health insurance, and we'll keep the governing body apprised as more develops there. Due to both supply chain delays and staffing shortages, we have had delays on two projects with Gilmore Solutions concerning backup and server maintenance, and then our security upgrades with INA. All projects are currently estimated to start next week, first week of August. I will continue to keep you all informed of updates there. And then we did file an insurance claim for the wind damage at the Ball Diamonds and the light pole and fixture that was lost. Insurance is gonna cover just about $7,000 of the cost for replacing that pole and light fixture, and the work has been scheduled with the contractor, but we don't have a firm date yet of when they plan to come out and do that. So that is all I have for you this evening.
Any questions? Ethan's report, council.
There was a, I have one question. Down in the Riverside Park, there was a light pole that blew over in the park. Has that pole been put back up with a current LED light?
Evergy is taking care of that, and no. And then there were another standard pole that had electrical on it, and we've replaced those with a different, with posts as opposed to the full-on timber poles. So...
Electrical is coming underground on those posts and not overhead, right, Pat?
Correct to the outlets, that's correct. And then the one light pole that is down, we did receive a locate request from West Art, so it's impending that they'll be putting that back in.
That'll be done before Old Settlers.
I'm not gonna say anything for...
Well, our intention is to have it done.
We hope so.
Are we gonna get the lights back up on the bridge?
Uh, yes, Grant is...
Yes, one of Grant's projects, I know he was getting lights.
Are they down?
Yeah, they're down.
Not completely, but yeah, there are quite a few.
Haven't even noticed. Gets used to seeing them. You miss the beauty of them.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Post same sign. We are adjourned. Thanks, council. Thanks, Halsted.